Hutchinson, I am Council for the North Babylon Union Free School District, and I am serving as the temporary chairperson for this meeting. The meeting is called to order at 8:18 PM. And I would like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Ms. Tedesco?
Here.
Mrs. Rivers?
Here.
Mrs. Rowland?
Here.
Mr. Lucetti?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Scheid?
Here.
At this time, we are going to administer various Oaths of Office, and I'd like to start with the Superintendent of Schools.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, taken.
Aye, Kenneth Graham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Superintendent of Schools.
The duties of Superintendent of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I will now administer the Oath of Office to the newly elected Board members, starting with Ms. Heather Rowland.
I, Heather Rowland, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And support the Constitution of the State of New York. And support the Constitution of the State of New York. And faithfully discharge. And faithfully discharge. The duties of Board Trustee. The duties of Board Trustee. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I will now administer the Oath of Office to Kat Tedesco. I will now administer the Oath of Office to our student representative, Amaya Carson.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, taken.
Aye, Carson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And support the Constitution of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Student Representative.
Student Representative.
For the North Babylon Union Free School District.
For the North Babylon Free Union District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
We will now call for nominations for the Board of Education President.
I would like to nominate Heather Rowland for President of the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask one more time. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, we will now call for the vote. All in favor of Heather Rowland as Board of Education President?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? You are now Board of Education President. And I will administer the Oath of Office to Ms. Heather Rowland.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, taken. I, Heather Rowland, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And support the Constitution of the State of New York. And support the Constitution of the State of New York. And faithfully discharge. And faithfully discharge. The duties of Board President. For the North Babylon Union Free School District. For the North Babylon Union Free School District. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I will now call for nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education?
I nominate Matt Lucetti.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will now call for the vote. Oh, excuse me, are there any other nominations for Vice President? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will now call for the vote. All in favor of Matt Lucetti being Vice President?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Matt Lucetti, you are now Board of Education Vice President.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, taken.
Aye, Matt Lucetti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Board of Education Vice President.
And I will discharge the duties of Vice President.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We're gonna switch. So that he can sit next to you.
Okay, good.
Now, we're gonna do the appointments of school officials. Appointment of District Clerk and administration of Oath of Office. Appointment of District Clerk for the Board of Education recommends the Board of Education appoint Erin Aristey as District Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now.
Erin, yeah.
What do I have her to?
No, she has to go to Erin, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I already read that. Yes, everyone was in favor.
Yep.
So I'm going to administer the Oath of Office for Erin, please?
District Treasurer. See if they're gonna do three times.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, taken. I, Erin Aristey, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And support the Constitution of the State of New York. And support the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge. And I will faithfully discharge. The duties of District Clerk. The duties of District Clerk. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Appointment of School District Attorney, General Counsel. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Gercio Ngercio, LLP, General Counsel for the School District for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Start here, she's not gonna be sworn in tonight, but she could still vote to appoint her.
Okay. Appointment of Deputy District Clerk for the Board of Education recommends the Board of Education appoint Olivia Bu... How do I s...?
Buwazi.
Buwazi as Deputy District Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so that's done, she's just not here tonight.
Gotcha. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Olivia... I'm sorry, appointment of the District Treasurer. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Tina Tiana Bella Castro as District Treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year, and further that she is bonded in the amount of $1 million. The Board President advises that the District Treasurer should be authorized as the sole signatory on all checks issued by the North Babylon School District. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I administer the Oath of Office. Missed a whole page. I'm nervous, I didn't expect.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Appointment of Deputy Treasurer. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Christine Mahone as Deputy Treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year, and further that she is bonded in the amount of $1 million. I need a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Awesome. You did F already, right?
Yeah. Is she here?
No, she's not.
No, okay. Appointment of Claims Auditor. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Michael T. Kearns to the position of Claims Auditor. Fees for the engagement are $18,262 for the 2025-2026 school year. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appointment of School Physician. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Dr. Anthony Donatelli Jr. as a school physician at an annual rate of $31,979 for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Designation of Depositories. Recommend the Board of Education designate the following as Banks of Deposit for the 2025-2026 school year. Citibank Capital One. Got a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have to abstain from that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
I thought you shook your head. I'll say abstentions and noes. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Noraki Smith, LLP, as the district's external auditors for the 2025-2026 school year. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Cullen and Danowski, LLP, as the district's internal auditors for the 2025-2026 school year. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. For the omnibus motion items from 2 to 48. If you wanna take a look at quickly, if there's any questions on that. Recommend the Board approve the omnibus motion items 2 through 48.
Motion.
Second? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Close that one out. Now we're into just regular board meeting now, so.
Okay.
That was the reorg meeting.
Right.
So just mention that over and that.
Okay, so now we are in a continuation from the reorganization agenda into the regular business meeting agenda. The correspondence to the Board of Education. Looks like we don't have any... Oh, no, we do, there is one person's name there. If you don't see your name on there, please get in touch with Mrs. Aristey. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Education. Minutes from the Board of Education regular meeting, May 29, 2025. And minutes from the Board of Education meeting, June 16, 2025.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstentions? Motion carries. And Superintendent's Report and Presentations?
Just real briefly for the Superintendent's Report. Congratulations to those board members that were sworn in this evening, including Amaya. And congratulations to those board members who are now the new 25-26 officers. So now we're gonna move into the... We've transitioned from the reorg meeting, which is a meeting that happens at the beginning of every year. It establishes a whole bunch of things that are law and protocol for districts operating for the next year. And now we're gonna move into a regular business meeting that we have. That concludes the Superintendent's Report this evening. So I'm gonna kick it right back over to you, Ms. Rowland.
Sure.
As I'm waiting, I just wanna say the graduation ceremonies and moving up ceremonies at the end of the year, if any of you had a chance to visit any of them. You know, we had a lot of shifting. It was those very, very hot days for the elementary and middle school ones. We had to shift them indoors. So there was a lot of planning that had to be redone at the last minute. And I just wanted to commend certainly our building administration, all of our staff for their ability to be flexible on that. And the ceremonies were just tremendous. And it was all highlighted and capped off with the high school graduation out at the field, which is a far cry different in terms of the weather. I think people were out there with blankets and wool hats almost. It was very chilly on Friday evening, but it was a great ceremony. So congratulations to everyone on those ceremonies at the end of the year.
Okay, the next section is for public participation, guidelines for public comment. This section gives the Board of Education the opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or make a brief statement on agenda items only. The time available will be limited to five minutes for each comment or question. Policy 1230, Public Comment at Board Meetings.
Hi, congratulations. Evelyn Hindell, Seven Hinton Avenue. I was just wondering. With Tiana being the sole signature on all checks, where are the checks and balances in the system at that point? Being everything that we're going through?
Tiana? Yeah.
No, I'm just wondering because...
Yeah, Tiana serves in that capacity, so I'm gonna ask if she doesn't mind to respond to that.
Nothing per... It's really nothing personal, I'm just concerned. Is that... That is how it has always been, correct? So my concern is what's always been done has not worked. So is there any concern moving forward? Changing how it's always been done, which obviously at this point in time is a problem.
I appreciate the question, Evelyn. It's a different process that you're talking about, and that process that your concern rises from was already changed. This is a different process in terms of just the signature on the check itself. So it's two different processes. The one that was in question for this year has already been changed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing as there is no one else coming up. Policies for a second reading and adoption. There are three listed. And Personnel Actions Report.
You gotta do the first first, you gotta do the motion. So motion?
Oh, sorry. Motion. Second?
Well.
Yeah. Any abstentions? Any noes? Okay. Motion carries. Personnel Actions Report, July 1, 2025. The Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board approve Personnel Actions Report and schedules A, B, and C dated July 1, 2025. Motion? Second? All in agree?
All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions?
Yep, abstentions. Motion carries.
Ms. Rowland, just while we're finishing up, and the Board just adopted the Personnel Action Report. I want to just mention, we do have one of our new appointees here this evening, Amanda Maderios, is one of our new music teachers. So congratulations and welcome.
Consulting Agreement Acting CSC, CPS Chairperson, resolve the Board of Education hereby approves a consultant agreement with Christine DiStefanis as the Acting CSC, CPSC Chairperson for the 2025-2026 school year, and hereby authorizes the Board President to sign the agreement on behalf of the entire Board of Education. I need a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any abstentions? Noes? Motion carries. Consultant Agreement Grant Waiver. Resolve the Board of Education hereby approves a consultant agreement with James A. Svedson as a grant writer for the 2025-2026 school year, and hereby authorizes the Board President to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Approval of the following omnibus motion items? A through...
P.
P. I need a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any abstentions? Noes? Motion carries. Action items? Professional Learning Plan 2025. Recommend the Board approve Professional Learning Plan for the 2025-2026 school year. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Any abstentions? Noes? Motion carries. Stipulation of Agreement and General Release. Resolve the Board of Education hereby approves a stipulation of settlement and release resolving a matter with the parent of a student with a disability regarding the 2025-2026 school year, and hereby authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute that agreement on behalf of the district. I need a motion?
Motion.
Who was that? Keisha? Second? Jeff? All in favor? Any abstentions? Noes? Motion carries. Public Hearing Code of Conduct 2025-2026. There you go.
Mr. Rose is just gonna turn that on for me, and I think the Board can stay in their seats. The presentation... Or unless you'd wanna move into the audience. The Board's already seen the presentation, it's a couple of slides. It's good, Mr. Rose. So each year, the Board of Education is asked to re-adopt all of the policies within its policy manual. This year, the Board just did that, they're in the reorganization section. One of those policies is the Code of Conduct, which is Policy 5300. And then additionally, the Board has to consider the District Emergency Management Plan as well. So as a part of that process, each of those goes up on our website as a 30-day hearing, essentially, where the public can then submit comments and feedback on each of those prior to the Board adopting it for full implementation for the following year. So this is the beginning of that process, this is the beginning of the 30 days. All of this information will be up on our website, starting tomorrow. So if you go to the website, you're gonna get an annoying box that stops you, and it won't let you click out of it unless you X or you actually enter it. And it'll be the Code of Conduct hearing and the District Emergency Management Plan. And so this is just a brief agenda in terms of what we're gonna talk about, just to review the hearing, a little bit of the timeline, which we've started to do already. Code of Conduct and some of the philosophy for that. Code of Conduct highlights, any discussion and questions from the Board, and then the District Emergency Management Guidebook. So within that link there in this presentation, again, will be up on the website, that's the draft Code of Conduct. So I've been working with our leadership team to take the existing Code of Conduct that we had. And then NISBA did a policy review for us, so NISBA shared some feedback with us, and Gercio did a review of it as well. And then our leadership team did a review of it to see if what was being suggested is actually what we do in practice, and making sure that the two of those jive. We're in a place where we believe it is. So as I mentioned earlier, all districts are required to do this. It's been reviewed by now the District and Building Administration, as well as the Board of Education. The 30-day public comment period will open today, or tomorrow, through the 31st. And that'll be an online review for anyone who has any questions or concerns. And you can send those to me by the 31st at 11:59 for consideration to include within the policy if there is any questions or concerns. And then ideally, we'll bring this policy back to the Board of Education for adoption at an August meeting. So the Code of Conduct philosophy goes very simply. Maintain safety and wellness of all of our students and staff, and establish some definitions so that we all have a shared definition of what's happening within the Code of Conduct. Our expectations for all individuals within the school. Utilizing this, you know, when we look at Code of Conduct, infractions, using them as teachable moments wherever possible, with the understanding that at times there are disciplinary consequences that are more punitive in nature as opposed to a teachable moment. And that depends on the infraction within the Code of Conduct. Again, utilizing restorative practices wherever appropriate, and reviewing this annually and gaining feedback from all stakeholders so that we can make adjustments each year. It does include eligibility requirements for extra and co-curricular activities, where in the past, there was a separate policy that dealt with eligibility. We've built that into the Code of Conduct now, and that would then undergo that same annual revision and feedback loop. This includes some of the new things, reference to the use of artificial intelligence, AI in the classrooms, you know, when it comes to academic honesty, those types of things. Include reference to New York State requirements for banning cellphones and internet-enabled devices, which that's something that we've spoken about already. It's not something that North Babylon is doing. That's a state law that is happening across the entire state, so that all students K through 12 in public schools, there'll be a cellphone and internet-enabled device, that's not the one that we issue. Ban from bell to bell, and bell to bell means from the beginning of the school day through the end of the school day. And it also will outline the Code of Conduct procedures for the new visitor management system and security vestibules that are being installed at all of our buildings this summer. So that's all on the Code of Conduct. Again, that link there, and the plans will be available for your review, will be on our website. The second part of this this evening is the Draft Emergency Management Guidebook. This is... All schools have district emergency plans, and those are, again, subject to a public hearing, where we seek feedback. We take that feedback, we may integrate some of it. The Board also has the opportunity to provide feedback, and then those plans are adopted prior to the opening of school. In addition, and that plan is a public plan. In addition, all school buildings have emergency management plans. Those are not public documents. Those deal with how we handle emergencies at a particular building, and the information within there is confidential for safety reasons. So each year, Mr. Varline, our District Director of Security, in collaboration with our administration, the Director of Facilities, we have a District Health and Safety Committee, which has building administrators, as well as teachers on it. They all review that plan and discuss that plan over the course of the year. And then that plan comes to me in draft form at about this time of year. And then it goes onto the website for that public hearing time. So both of those documents, well, three documents actually, starting tomorrow. This presentation, the Draft Code of Conduct, and the Draft Safety Plan will all be available for the public's review. And on this one, uh, you could send both myself and Joe Varline, who's our Director of Security, any questions, concerns, or feedback that you might have. And similar to the Code of Conduct, we will have this available, uh, hopefully for Board's adoption in August. So from the Board of Education, are there any questions or comments?